So the first thing is, so adjust agenda. Changes or additions. Communication from the audience, does anybody have anything to share that's not on the agenda? You can chime in when it comes to all.
Just quickly.
Can you state your name?
I'm sorry, Paul Fix, resident American. I am. The agenda doesn't specifically state that we're looking for comments from requesters during our funding. We'll give opportunities to speak to your collaborations of our opponents.
It does, it says to include feedback from any of the requesters if present.
So yeah, well, accept your feedback. We generally have input. Okay, so first is item one, select board choose 20 year or 30 year term for the for the bomb and the wastewater project. And this is something that we just had a choice on.
So we went in thinking it should be 30. When we first submitted the application, they came back and said, no, you can go 20 because most of this is equipment and so that's what we went with. And then when we just took the amendment for the additional 75,000, it came back and they had it as 30. So I questioned it and they said, well, we have clearly like about three, so you could go 30. Um, I have talked with Aldridge and Elliot and he's like, yeah, you can do that, but keep in mind that some parts of the project will likely need to be addressed again before 30 years is up. So then you're kind of, you know, you're financing about 30 years and then might either tension again in 20.
Yep.
But it's all comes down to, you know, it's significantly less on the debt service.
And are you?
If you go out 30.
Doesn't make any difference on our, how much net interest we pay at the end.
Yeah, yeah. Well, 30. Well, there's, there is the subsidy, but keep in mind we're still putting out a loan of 2.275 million. And then we still, because we talked to cost about that. So our loan amount is about the, how we, the amount that we borrow.
Are those more than our interest? So it's basically, it's almost a $40,000 difference. What was the, um, what would the interest? Is that what home rate bears, right? To not, to basically be less for a year. What's the interest rate, probably 7%?
2%.
Oh, that's not bad.
Yeah.
I would make the motion that we go with a 30 year term for the wastewater credit.
Second.
Okay.
Do you know what the difference in the, in the interest would be?
Yeah.
Was 10 years worth of 2%?
I can do a quick animation.
So the, the that's a problem.
We need to accept a quick, please, I want that to review that.
Just to have a problem.
So it's basically the interest is $10,000 a year. So it's still at least saving rate here is $20,000 a year. Because 2%, on, on special rate.
So the mortgage.
Oh, because we just borrowed that from this one.
You can say.
So total interest 20 years is about 1,87,000. And then 30 years. 752.
So I get 730,000. That's the difference in interest payments.
No, I get 752 in total interest on 30 years and 487, I think. Is it because you're doing it on a monthly instead of an annual?
I'm just multiplying out what's in the item number one thing, 20 years at 130 versus 30 years at 111.
I'm just doing it, I just did the amortization cap there on the loan amount, 20 years, 2%. It shows, um, and then the annual, annual schedule and the total interest is 480,000.
And is the annual payment correct?
Right here, the 44 plus the 93, um, this one's for 20. Yeah, and it's like 138,000, so.
I'm sorry, what's the difference in the interest?
47, 752.
370.
Well, it's 32,000 for 10 years, so that's 370,000 more in that service for 30 years.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I did miss subtraction wrong. Yes. Paul, do you have another comment?
Well, the comment I'd make is that if it's in the water system, some of this work will need to be pretty done sooner than 30 years, so.
Maybe.
While, potentially, so while you're extending the payments and reducing them, you might be adding more at the end while you're still paying for things.
Right, that is exactly the discussion.
Well, that's why I hadn't heard it mentioned, so.
So Casey said, true, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, because that's the argument, we either pay a little bit less for longer or more for shorter. Right, that's the.
Mr. Wilson, I have some type of experience in the water, wastewater world.
I'm hoping for a brand new plant for 30 years. But no, like they're replacing the little blue liners, the little blue liners. One of them has been replaced, one of them hasn't. So that's the whole life of the plant. So what was? Since, right, and then if we do the add alternates.
Yeah.
The grit collector, the boiler, you know, the boiler isn't a huge cost.
If you had to replace it.
Um, and blowers, really, the blowers are the big ticket item of the, of the.
Okay, so those might be more like a 20 year item.
And we could put those on a replacement schedule.
Yeah.
So. It's, I, you know, I'm always forepaying as much as you can.
Yeah.
For a short period of time.
So I can do that most of that. Those five hundred, we already seconded it, but it's.
That's okay. So now I'll take it when you can, start it.
So Sherri can sit through there and say no.
To second it does not necessarily support, it means this is one of the strengths.
So just to restate, it sounds like if we pay, if we stick with the 20 year, then we can pay less long. Because it, we almost have to use your house like I think.
Oh, for life of the loan, yeah. It doesn't help if you do that servicing, but for the life of the loan, certainly.
But, but every year we're getting 37,000 dollars. So that has to be supported from rates. Yeah, so, okay, so the motion on the table is to do the 30 year. So all favor 30 year, we say aye. All those nay, nay. Any questions, so motion fails. So more discussion. Here, so we're gonna do a little bit 20 years, but then.
20 years will go by, really fast.
Oh, wait. That's one year, so.
We'll be good.
Yeah. Uh, all right, sounds good. Next is item two, select board to review our requests received to include feedback from the requesters if present. So.
I just wanted to start quick, thank you guys for coming in person. And I know, I have a few questions. There's a post and a couple of questions, so I just wanted to make sense to, just in terms of the process.
Yeah.
To hear, to talk to those, um, maybe members who are here for their specific projects and then have a discussion at the end just about general process of how we're going about. This phase, does that make sense?
General process of the.
Like, well, like, are we? We didn't necessarily decide that we're going to give dollars away today necessarily.
Right.
Um, and there will be a lot of calculating and what to do, and just, like, there were some questions that I had a day email and some thoughts, so.
As you may join.
So does it make sense to just kind of start with these four applications?
Sure, we have, uh, there's our ones online.
Okay.
Yeah, sure, that's great with me. All right, so. I'll just roll through the list and somebody's here, or if we have questions. So why don't we just roll through and see if we have questions and then somebody, okay. So first on our list is Calagonia Grange number nine, does anybody have questions about that request? That was the one that I submitted by Robert. That was in there. For, and it's requesting $40,000 for a green accessibility project. Yeah. So did anybody have questions about this? And if anybody here want to add anything that's not already that's submitted.
Well, I'm here if anybody has a question, but I would just emphasize how important the Grange building is to East Hardwick community mainly, but larger areas as well as a meeting place, event place. And even though it's been used quite effectively for that in the past, everything that we pump into is to involve and practice music events, meeting, animation workshops. It's limited because the accessibility is, it's not suited to anybody who can't find some stairs to get into the building. So we've been working on the building and a lot of it, putting a roof on it, getting some wiring, and then some other things. But accessibility is our next and sort of most important priority. Even though it's, um, it's a big, it's a big project, the funding we could get from Art, but we could leverage to get potentially in other grants to ask some national funds, but it could also one way for its building project.
Okay, next. Thank you.
And accessibility, all of questions. Um, just a quick question for the, um, and we, we basically are looking to have a summary, I know that application, there's a lot of details in there. And you mentioned that there's some of the funding is asked through the preservation trust went across the roof, right? And electric, there've been a lot of, there've been a lot of things done to the Grange building so far, right?
Yes.
Okay.
In fact, the wiring that we did, I don't remember exactly whether that was a preservation trust funding, but that was a sort of prerequisite for getting a lift in, if we're going to give a lift, we had to upgrade. So we've done that.
Great, so that's a big, great, that answers the question.
So maybe cultural facilities. Wiring.
Yeah.
Pardon?
Cultural facilities, yeah.
Water.
And just hope.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, matching each other. Great, so if you, if you receive Orfot funds, you would have sent you up almost half of your project costs. What's the grace so far?
Yeah, it's hard to know, uh, in the, in the narrative, the longer in the narrative, it's like, you've got to estimate something like 120,000 dollars to move back.
So probably not over 300.
You don't, you don't really know, and we've also, we think the design that we got back then may, it may become less than that. Thus, work than the original vision, but uh, until we get some more funding, we're not going to really finalize the design plans yet.
Yeah. So I'm just really quick, let us go, our question as regards to this.
So.
The town has to spend months by a certain time. If we are giving funds to other organizations, do they also have to spend those funds by that same deadline?
It's a big question.
I think once we spend it, like we give it to somebody.
We're done.
We've spent it.
Okay, so we can, so we could say just.
We write a chat or somebody, we spend that money.
Okay, so we're, we would be holding that until our project is completed and then we're basically giving those funds to the organizations in the next couple of months and then call that spent, is that, okay, great.
Or we could choose to say we want to wait and commit those funds after we see X, Y, and Z.
I guess.
Because we still have time, right? We still, well, while we're already have to spend.
Great, yeah.
Except if you spend the 20, 26.
Yeah.
Your stories are. That's a good point. We can last minute.
Why this first, until it's, you know.
Yeah, in a rush. As long as, yeah, as long as, as ready to send the shot.
That's what those other places do to all of us.
That's why I don't.
Make plenty of money.
Yeah. All right. Great. Let's, uh, so the next on our item two is civic standard, does anybody have questions about this?
They're looking for their estimate, we think they're at least 18 months. Is what it is.
So about half of what we ask for is to cover the, the costs of, you know, keeping the building. We're not going to charge rent, so that's any kind donation from the landowner. Um, so it's the costs of, you know, internet, lights, water, basic stuff. Other half of the cost is to be able to pay people to, to keep the building open as much as possible so that it can be um, an open door on Main Street collaborative space for, you know, kids coming down from Haysen, people who are in town. Kind of a community, cultural community center is one way, we've talked about it. Um, you know, it's not a social services center. Um, it, it's a place that we're gonna be collaboratively building cultural events. So it's essential for that part of our mission that we have an office, you know, but I noticed that one of the comments was that location and I just want to point out that this project is actually using multiple locations, so that location is our office headquarters. But as we have done for years, we will continue to do programming in the branch hall, in the townhouse, in Atkinsfield, and we hold in new and other venues, um, that we're starting to talk to about collaborations. So just to point that out, yes, we're asking for support for that specific space, but we're also asking for support to pay people to help us to run this programming, to keep that office open, to be able to offer segments for teenagers and students that are involved with our work. So in a way, there's like two pieces to the request. They're about half and half, 25, 27 roughly. Um, and just while I'm yammering on, I just want to say that any amount for us would be really meaningful to leverage further funding as a new nonprofit, you know, for private funders and for federal grants, to see that we have any investment, any support from our town government would be deeply meaningful. So just wanted to say that.
Thank you. Can you state your names?
Rose Freeman. So I'm just thinking that, um, when we get to town meeting day and our budget, that surely you guys are planning to add a nonprofit organization as part of the corporation as well.
Um, yeah, uh.
Potentially, if anybody would be received. Yeah, maybe that would be helped after that.
Yeah, and then I want to make sure we had.
I'm just saying, I'm just, you know, because these are places to go, or, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, my other question too, is there economic development costs that apply for, it's about profits, but is, does that, does that have a purpose as well?
For loans?
That would potentially be a question for these.
We got to look at our special fair policy.
I don't think it, and it talks about what kind of borrower. Um, you know, maybe wrong as a nonprofit is a lot of times there's no guarantee.
Right.
Because there's a profit, so they can shake you on the corporation, I know LCO is so proud of where you can have somebody personally guaranteed with that. Um, but I don't think our policies, they talk about or guesses what types of entities. And I think it's more about what the purpose is.
But I don't, it's a lot of.
All right. Number three on our list is the Prosperity Care Center. Here, we have, the select board have questions about this. Kathy, do you want? Do you want to say something or if that wasn't in your application or?
Oh, wow, I don't know that.
Oh, state your name, please.
Well, I just want to say that the care center is one of two facilities alive or so literally much, we didn't get that seconded. And they're very important institutions. And they provide. The pandemic made abundantly clear that the way the vessels constructed 25 years ago is not adequate for today's need and possible future pandemics and other issues. So we have to do the ATRAC system and the kitchen. We got most of the money from the ATRAC system. But when we look in the process, we've got applications out for the kitchen project. But like everybody else's projects, the cost goes up daily. So we're just continuing to raise money from every place we can think of and we have at least a quarter of the residents currently of the 24 residents. We don't have 24 now, we have 22. Our Hardest residence, we have their significant, of course, the Harwick residence and residents there. So, um, I don't think it's our responsibility to support in this small amount. Every little bit's going to help us get there.
And what are their towns that you're coaching for our programs?
Oh, when the grass area, the, 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 water, those are the ones.
To catch the area.
Yeah.
Thank you. For, uh, calls for. All right, uh, next is the East Hardwick Neighborhood Organization. There were two of them.
They didn't have to ask what we need.
It was more, uh.
It was an idea, this is, this is a meeting now, it was more of figures.
Now, we have the, um, the radar speed signs and then the traffic berths and the late sleeping. This one was a sidewalk. This one, yeah, there's none.
Okay, oh, so this is sidewalks and. Sorry, I didn't get a chance to do this before.
I would just say it'd be really nice to have a portion of our funds specifically used for it. Whether it's any one of these projects that, um, especially since the fund to the right, so basically how many people live in town could, you know, ask the village to choose something. The sidewalks are a huge project, simply able to front all, even with the arm of us, we have road bundles up. But whether it was maybe one of these slave quests, which could be a big, quick, let's say, some guard, so there should definitely be some guardrails. Um, what, lots of places do, but, um, either we could want us to leave, um, kind of private things, or we could have a later discussion about sidewalks, but that's just my perspective.
Really, I think those are, those are the most town.
Or the range, or something, something that's sort of specific.
Just to.
With sidewalks and stuff.
Or yes. Just to know, the side of the mission just did a walk audit that the, that we're receiving that. Walk audit. Identify. That information, which is a more comprehensive thing for sidewalk things, but also guardrails, other things that are issues with sidewalks or pathways, crosswalks. Maybe that, it might be like.
Or, I don't speak of, would you have this chapter? Working it into the budget is not something that we. So do that.
I've, I've personally done a walking audit in East Hardwick and there are several things that should need to be addressed ASAP in terms of walkability and guardrail safety. So I think either we write it into the budget and get it done ASAP or, you know.
Yeah. 20 years of walk audit, two quarters, we can make, just some, like, make a plan.
Um, I talked to Tom about, there's a place, you know, and I think that you could buy used guardrail that they take off like the interstate and there's like a company that sells used guardrail. We have several old spots in town that could use guardrails that's either damaged or fallen down. But I definitely, there's like three or four spots up in East Hardwick that we use guardrail. So I don't think that's a huge expense. Obviously sidewalks are expensive. It's, yeah, I mean, you either have a rook or do it in summer or we pay a company to come in and just do the sidewalks. But if we do the sidewalks in East Hardwick, they like to do some other catch bases.
Well.
Yeah.
I mean, see this report, you'll see that.
I've seen them.
Yeah.
I don't need.
I've seen them, you've seen them, I don't know how many, many seconds you've seen them, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's there.
Yeah.
Oh.
And then in that, you know, do redoing the sidewalks and the catch bases. Nice to incorporate some sort of, uh, you know, mapping. Their water system is not mapped at all, not our town map, where we have our water system in the town of Harwick, in the borough of Harwick. Water and sewer. Right, yeah, we don't have that layer in East Hardwick. And I think we, we should have that for sure, that's something that we should think about, talking with the fire, we should be working with that to try to get that done, so. There's a lot of stuff out there.
Yeah.
That needs to get done.
Yeah.
Well, one of the places, there's a guardrail that it's totally buried. So just digging it out.
Right, yeah.
And we have, we have projects like that all, I mean, they fall over, yeah.
Yeah.
So I don't, I mean, I can find it from who we want ability. I think we also just have a more comprehensive plan for the town of Harwick, right? There are our highest priorities for sidewalks, guardrails, whatever. Lots of places.
Like, for example, down here on Wolkert Street, that three and a half, or two and a half foot drop onto the roadway on the sidewalk, I mean, that's, that's another place that we should focus on. So there's a lot of stuff like that now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
There used to be a program called Safe Racks to Schools, which partially would fund sidewalks, I don't work that program system anymore, but have, are there any grants for sidewalks, like?
There, um, there, this is a.
Oh, that's.
Yeah, um, and I don't know, possibly sort of recall, what you said, or follow the transportation, health alternatives plan. But, um, I think not positive, that's on sidewalks, it definitely would sound like paths and other stuff. I know our swing bridge is a, would be a good candidate for those funds. So, yeah, I mean, that's a good point, there's, there are potentially good sources of grant funding out there for this stuff. We just need to figure out what our projects are, what is going to cost, collective funding.
Yeah, I think we should, we should hopefully have that planning intern person to help with that, as some of that just.
The way I'm thinking about the East Hardwick funds in terms of taking about our funds back. The way I'm thinking about the East Harvard funds in terms of thinking about our funds back, I believe would be something about the cap ratio for village. And so if you say the cap ratio in East Harvard is roughly seven hundred, I don't know if that's accurate, then that would be earmarking about fifty six thousand dollars of ARBA funds, which we could spend over the next three years for various projects. But if we can, if we market now, maybe some of those things, we can do more planning for it. But that's kind of what I was thinking I had this. Spread that that way. But then I don't recognize that sort of.
I like that idea.
Because that's how we got the funds.
Yeah, what about the people who are in there, the two villages?
Well, there's two, I mean, that's kind of the rough. I think if we're going to do anything for village centers, then we focus on the, you know, how many people are considered a village center? I don't know any of the rating. Just what, like eighty three dollars a person, something like that.
You just cut everybody a check. You could do that, too.
Yeah. Take eighty three dollars off the gas.
Okay. Uh, so next is the Harwood area food pantry. Any questions about this request? Heather.
Yeah.
Hi, Heather.
Hello.
Hey. Uh, so did any of the select board have questions about the pantry request? Heather, do you have anything you want to add to that wasn't in the, in the request?
Yeah, um, so in looking at the request, the original request from the town, I guess I want to point out that, um, our request covers both of those bullet points as far as maintaining vital public services. Um, the pantry is a vital public service and these funds would provide general operating expenses. Um, that right now, there's an increase in food costs that we're all experiencing as individuals and as an organization. Um, so that creates a little bit of uncertainty, I think, um, as to where that's going. Um, another thing that, you know, we're experiencing changes and transitions in both our programming and our staffing. I'm, I'm new to this position. Um, and focusing my attention initially to make sure that we have the funding to meet the, um, increased demand that we are seeing. Um, I'm not sure if that demand is coming from the increased costs. I would imagine it is. Um, and so I just wanted to point out those, those, um, changes that, you know, creates, we're not an unstable organization in any way, but just to point out that those, all of those factors can create, um, a little more instability. So these funds would help to, um, you know, help with our general operations costs and make sure that we can continue to serve our community.
Okay. Great.
Heather, what does the, um, what are you guys thinking about long term for reaching that gap?
Well, I don't know that there's an actual gap yet. Um, but I am like, I came into this position just a few months ago and I'm really, I am focusing initially, um, really on raising funds, looking at grant opportunities. We are going to other towns for ARBA funds because we did expand our operations to, um, Craftsbury, say, and Albany. So we are approaching those towns as well as Greensboro, um, to request funding and support from them. So it's, it's more, um, not that we're experiencing budget gaps, but with the increasing costs and demand and all of these changes happening, you know, just to make sure that we're still able to serve the community um, fully.
Great, thank you. All right, so next is the number six, our conservation commission, which has requested funds to do a natural resources inventory. Do you have a question, select word question about this?
No, we have, um, the commission.
To me.
Unless, unless the projects change.
Not that I'm aware of.
Norma.
Uh, Norma, are you here?
Yes, I am. I'm here.
The Mystic Conservation Commission?
Yes, I am.
So can you run add to the request?
I'm sorry, I'm having, uh, I think I have a unstable signal here. Would you? I can't hear you sometimes.
So there, so maybe we should, we should be directing these funds to the, uh, any gay broadband.
What?
She has an unstable connection. Well.
Norma, as I read the grant proposal, and I may have missed this, I had the sense that, that the cost of this is still pretty vague. Is that true?
Well, it's only vague in that, um, the information that, that we've gotten from natural resources people and, um, other, other people who have done this, um, is that the scope of what you can do obviously determines the end cost and the amount of public buy-in will have some effect. If a landowner is willing to, to have his or her property be part of the survey, the more of that you have, that the greater the cost might be. Does that make any sense?
It does. So the fifteen to twenty thousand dollars that, that the grant proposal referenced, um, comes out of the conversations you've had with people, what this has cost them?
Well, it, uh, Agency of Natural Resources is really the people that we talk to the most.
And that's where you got that number?
That's correct. We also, um, talked with Michael Lou Smith, who does this kind of work, and that is absolutely, he corroborated that that was a, you know, a, a, a correct guess.
Thank you.
More questions?
The, the inventory, part of the town plan, is it not one of the town plan goals?
I, I'm sorry, I can't hear.
Is, is one of the town plan goals, am I correct? I haven't, I need to go back and look, but, um, the, the, the inventory.
Yes. Are, are you, are you talking about, is this in the town plan?
Yes.
Yes, it is, and we referenced that in the application and gave you the quote. Yes, the town plan calls for us to produce such a thing because it is, it is kind of a starting tool, a foundational tool. If you know what you have, then you can make smarter decisions about what you do about what you have. And in terms of natural resources, um, we only know every day how important our natural world is. And we want to be as smart as we can be about where we put our efforts.
Thank you, Norma.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, next is the seven Harvard Downtown Commission.
Well, I, for the downtown commission and, um, mostly just in light of the fact that ARBA is American Recovery Plan Act. So, and the focus was, um, economic development, uh, supporting local businesses and keeping people in their houses. Um, so I felt like it was an opportunity that we want to pass up. Just for this nonprofit that's been.
Can you, uh, leave your hat at this station? Could you give some idea about what the money is for?
Um. I'm not certain that it would be, uh, as specific as that, but I think it would be there to support, um, that organization that's going to be formed. And potentially it would support part of the, um, salary for the person who will be hired to run that. Director, director type person, uh, to get on that. You know, we can, uh, this is kind of open. We can develop a grant program with it. We can, um, do additional, you know, events and community engagement stuff in downtown. The businesses, it's all economic development. Since they.
Okay, all right.
I don't know what's going to happen over, when we have that organization running. But it's coming.
And we are just so, because some of these projects overlap their budget as well. Are we already giving money to downtown designation? Mission?
No. It must be in your twenty three budget. Twenty one is fine, twenty five, twenty. Yeah.
We gave it to us one hundred and hundred, though, through the match plus last year.
Great.
It was like a.
And basically said, come back to us if you have to be more specific. Right, that's, that's the basically what we. There's not one that's further than twenty three thousand.
All right. Any other questions for the downtown commission? Uh, next is the Townhouse.
That would be me as well, yes. So the Townhouse, most people know, we're in a bit so a capital campaign to make it fully accessible. That project is, uh, ongoing and hopefully we'll, um, put the money together. So we did two different, two levels of support, of request. Um, we're doing some of the work that's considered just, uh, exterior agents work. Um, starting this fall and then early in the spring, we'll remove the old virus cage. And so I included it for the, the cost of that and then restore the exterior building. And then change the doors on the second floor back to the original window, where it was been. And, um, we had a cost connected to that. Uh, otherwise, if we uh, wanted to do the other level, um, support, the three thousand to go into the budget for the capital project, then it would just further leverage our ability to raise that over three hundred thousand.
But the, uh, just thinking it through, so that, so the larger project is at least three hundred thousand.
Larger.
And this would just be on to it.
Right.
But, uh.
Then it could be the amount so that it doesn't come out of the capital improvement budget. Otherwise, capital improvement budget is ten thousand for twenty three.
Yeah.
We just get as close as we can.
Right. And, but, but the other one, okay, so just to clear my mind, same as, you kind of outlined two different, um, proposals, but the, the first one that I was using, the fire stage replacement, you know, or in the siding, replacing the windows, that actually would stop the current water damage that's happening due to the exterior fire escapes is damaging the building, right?
Yeah, it has.
Yeah, but, yeah.
So it would address some, uh, serious.
But that, just, sorry, I'm meaning to just see, but that project would be not part of the budget for the overall, or is, or is that?
Well, we separated, we tried to separate it from it.
Um. So you need it separately?
Yeah, it's, it's part of that did from that contractor. Because we thought we had to, but then we found out from the major under me that we could do some things and it would be considered maintenance and regular maintenance activity. So it wouldn't be, um, you know, uh, having a negative effect on potential factors. Like, you can't, because you can't start the project that you're asking for grant money for. So it would be considered just general reasons and we wouldn't have to, we wouldn't have. Get into town.
So we, we possibly reduce the scope of the larger project? Okay.
Potentially, yes.
Yeah. Those are my questions.
Yeah.
So that would introduce the general budget that we get to town this year for?
Other maintenance issues? We have a. Well, that's not.
Maybe that, maybe that's better here, but.
Yeah, um, we have quite a few things on our facilities conditioning report that, that could be addressed with that instead of that. Um, and we have a third facilities condition. Right, these issues.
Is that, that will be, uh, takes the budget against, you know, the maintenance, right, parent?
That's the idea, although.
It's basically for everything.
Yes, it never, it never addresses everything.
So as soon as you fix a maintenance, piece that in the buffers or some other thing, it's always good.
Right, because that's in a, that's a fund, right, where we're catching broken after wine, I guess, to.
Capital improvement.
Yeah, so like this, though, for example, we got a lot more.
Because the ten thousands in capital improvement, the, the maintenance budget that we really should look at for all of our town buildings, it has like five hundred dollars in it. It's not, it doesn't address all things ultimately.
Yeah. All right. Next, next is nine Jubine Library. Questions about the Jubine?
So, which Eric and you are, are different than the application? Or there's.
Yes, so I had, so I have a question because when I read the application, it looked to me like the budget at the end was fully funded.
Right.
So I asked Joey Smith, who's, um, uh, I think she's president of the library board, and she sent, let me just, this. So she sent a revised budget that showed where, um, she got. Okay, so the revised budget, that's more, so what happened was Joey said that she had had a column to the right that didn't appear, like it got cut off, where she had no, noted what was what. So, um, the, where she put in, uh, where she broke it out differently, so it's additional rows. And so what, and it appeared to be all applicant contribution, and it looked like that was the remainder of what they needed. She broke that out so that now, instead of being one bulk thing, it was like one point eight millionish. So now she's got applicant contribution already in hand, it's nine hundred thirty nine thousand. Uh, to be decided, it's four hundred forty, and France expected in twenty twenty three is five hundred thousand. So it looks, so they, it, to me, what that breaks down into is, you know, the nine thirty nine in hand, they're, they're of level confidence about another half million grants, so they're moving actively moving for.
And they still have different targets, yeah.
They did do different targets. And they came in higher again, because that's what projects are doing. So they, it, it was too high, and they took a year, raised money, did the thing again, and it's there now. So they still have a gap.
Still like.
Yeah, it's still about the same over. So you could raise the money again, and we take a year, and then you have another big gap. Just that for everything.
And we have committed the bond to them, and then we also committed
last year to commit, uh, the general fund, 100.
That's, that's for, it really brings a big clue to us, um. There's too much in the shortfall. The shortfall was like 400,000 because it hadn't been confirmed to the IRB. So we did not, um.
We have two requests. The second one we turned down, but the first one we said they needed that we, it was all backwards.
Okay. Just for you to research, because your memory's better.
Obviously not.
Well, you have some memory.
Yeah, I think, because it was the same time as the street bridge, perfect raises two, almost two.
Yeah.
Over in the general fund, and then if we leave, we committed.
You mean the fund balance?
The fund balance, sorry.
Okay.
At least.
That would remove something alive.
I think we did, but, uh, it was a half, that's where they were. Almost.
Okay. I don't remember. I mean, there are a lot of things I don't remember. Uh, anything else about the library request?
And. Yes. There's more ideas.
Correct.
It wasn't really specific. She suggested she was, she said you can draw it.
Okay.
Oh.
Does she officially?
Oh, I thought it was a.
There was very good. So something to consider, but she, yeah, I, when I sent it to them.
That's a good idea. That's another project.
Yeah, so we could talk about some of those things that were on our original list that didn't get applications specifically made for them. But I think they're still on our list. They're still on our list.
Yeah. Yeah. Uh, next is 11 NEK broadband. Uh, and this is. Yep, got it. So uh, this request outlines a couple different possible scenarios about, um, our funds to be used to. Uh, I think it's just to accelerate a process that's gonna happen anyway. So.
Again, it's so overdue.
Yes.
Can you get high-speed internet to my house tomorrow?
Oh, you're making on one of those.
I am a great circle on that map.
Yeah.
I was asking, oh.
I can't get anybody specific service.
I know, I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
Uh, do they have questions?
Does, does accelerate it, is it easy work? Is it easy thus, you could get started sooner, is that the point?
Um, that's part of the point.
What's the other part of the point?
Well, the other part of the point is there's state money that's gonna go to other towns if we don't get the match from them to this project. So.
Am I right? This is a three to one match?
Well, every dollar you put in will result in three dollars of investment because the state will give a dollar and working speaking broadband will give a dollar for our existing projects.
Okay, so this is 33% of.
And every dollar given now by towns through IRA will result in less funding necessary and ultimately lower costs for everybody who is receiving service.
And the ultimate vision for NEK broadband would be that in some number, like in a decade, like anybody in Harvard could potentially have service from NEK broadband, or is that not a bad scenario?
NEK broadband is working to serve all locations served by electric service that don't currently have a high-speed access. So it's unlikely, at least before 2030, that we would serve places with Comcast even though they're up close speeds are low. It's unlikely we will serve people in facilities that decide to bring their video fiber in to. No, we don't plan to overbuild. We're really going after the places that the commercial providers have ignored because it's unprofitable.
Right.
Thank you for that.
And just to really be clear, first question, also the range, the range is pretty big in the past. It's 30,140,000. So the town could theoretically choose to provide any amount within that range and then those dollars can be matched the same way, or there are tiers that we need to commit to?
There's specific tiers. Were you to offer us less than the middle of 30,000 for something over one tier or less than the next, we would reject that offer and ask a negotiation down the. I just, if, if this won't work, if there's not a state funding works and.
Oh, makes sense.
And reaching.
Well, as a regional, yeah, you don't want town saying, yeah, you want to be.
We, so, I mean, I see in your comments, people saying, well, we might do a portion or whatever, but if it were a percentage of requests, we end up having to reject some.
And, well, can you just remind us of what those tiers are?
So could I, could I respond by addressing comments and she, if that does whatever. So first of all, thank you very much for asking for these requests. I think all of the requests I'm hearing seem important for the town, so I can probably have a dip off down on the whole. Um, I will say our official mention, but here it has certainly mentioned that that's why I know there is a limited question. One error in our submission, it talks about building what we call an OLT, which is the equipment cabinet in Harpwood. Harpwood will be served by OLTs and Grasberry would do this already, and Walden, which will be built in the end of this funding request, so.
I think that showed on the map.
The map shows it.
Okay.
Um, the question about people benefiting indirectly, we did say 100% in the form and see it passed, but the attachment basically says studies have shown that having high behavioral advantage increases property values, which sounds extreme. So it's a strategy, but you have to do your.
We've had some people are here recently with increased property values, just to benefit them.
I understand that.
Especially.
It doesn't benefit them unless they sell.
Yeah.
If my property value go up, then I'd pay more taxes and it benefits everybody else. It depends how you look at it.
It does.
So anyways, um, and we made, so. Let's see. So yes, as far as, I'll wait to pay you from back. Uh, so the point of requester has 420,000 pipeline. We have guaranteed 288, 932 or two thirds of that. If being at this meeting with this request counts as the pipeline, then we have a full amount, but that amount is higher by the amount we've asked you for.
By the maximum amount then?
Well.
By funding all?
We, the, the, we, we have matching funds available until September for the maximum. So if you 539, you've got 288, 932, there's a total.
Sorry, you got 200, but?
288, 932.
289, thank you. And does that September date mean that there would be imminent construction?
No, the September date means that the state's match goes back into the pool for people who haven't asked yet to request it, so we could make a second request. But it could also go to people other.
Thank you. Okay.
So what we've said is our, our, our existing build timeline is the 2030. With these funds, the builds that you commit to will be completed by the end of 2026 at the latest. I can say it's quite likely that some of it would happen next year. Maybe all of it, maybe not. And once we agree to this, I hate to say this, but as a public entity, we're gonna have some contract negotiations about how this is gonna happen, when the deadline will be, when we're gonna get the money. We've been giving contracts and we've signed with other towns, and we've signed two already, so. But it's not as, we're just gonna take the check and drop it. You'll have a conversation with us about what this means. Like 2026, or the 7, 2036. The commitment would be that anybody in those little circles they're lying to, will be able to subscribe. And I'll also mention that opportunity two, which is included in the middle of 30,000, covers Route 16, up past Pumpkin Lane, a riverside farm, not all the way to East Hardwick, but it does include Pumpkin Lane with a total of 22 addresses. So there is the East Hardwick funding.
Oh, you should have covered that thought.
He was trying to.
I know he was trying to. We'll come, yeah, we'll circle back to that.
So a, as far as the amounts go, the tiers were 30,000, which covered East Hardwick and, uh.
And Hartbeat.
Hartbeat, basically up towards Hartbeat. And the little beige section that crosses over into Walden will be done at no charge once Hardwick gets lit, we'll like that for that little piece of Hardwick down toward the wall. It's done, go over to Drew.
Thanks. Alright.
Paul, rather than my diving back into the application, which I, what is tier two?
Uh, hold on. Tier two is, uh, Route 16, oh, tier two, sorry, is the leave, the west of Route 14, west and, uh, so.
And how much money is that? That's the one.
Tier two is opportunity three, oh, it's 74,000, 330,000 of Richmond.
It's basically Richmond, yeah. That's not less than 14.
No, opportunity four is 35,000.
There's West Hill.
That's 48 without broadband, eight per hour, the opportunity two, or tier two, opportunity three, is 48 people without broadband, eight people per hour. Forty already served by something, but not enough to be there. So West Hill is 35 without broadband, including two per hour. There you go.
Can I just? Yes, but I'm gonna ask anyway. So the, I think going into Hartbeat one, which is a small one.
Yep.
Does that not connect the original one because they're not, there are not holes there, or is that the issue? Okay.
Yeah. None of this is.
Okay, so.
None of this has gone into final design phase. It has only, it's only been surveyed by LIDAR and state maps, so the ground truth thing won't happen until it either shows up on Hartland or even it shows up on.
Okay. Awesome. More questions about the NEK?
I need to know where we're at with this.
When you come by December?
September, September is, so.
September what?
We, we'll, we'll need time to submit applicants to the state broadband board, only time to consider it. Realistically, that's the, September date is irrelevant because we need to know soon. I mean, we should figure, I think it's early September, I don't know.
Okay.
Thirty days around, we think that will make it happen.
Okay. Got it.
And I, you know, I'll say, this, this will be done, whether this is funded or not, it's a matter of when and how.
Uh, so last one on our list, 12, um, for cybersecurity, and I think TC submitted this one and, uh. I know my. Don't. I don't wanna really speak too publicly about this, but our network is severely, uh, vulnerable. So my feeling on that is we could allocate money from here, but if we don't, we should have, we should stay down. As that would go here for 70,116 dollars for just the hardware?
Yeah.
To protect our network and all of our. So compared to a ransomware attack, that is cheap.
Yeah.
And so that's like the one-time cost, and then, so we have, we are 23, 23,000 dollars. Um, which we actually got a grant through the LCT to have something come in and do like a assessment, use on the application. So that's gonna be done probably later this month or next month, it's on the schedule for them to come in and put a device on and then give us a report, you know, showing us weaknesses, vulnerabilities. And then from there, we could get that quote for kind of all the hardware piece of that. Um, I think it's something that we can't keep putting off.
I didn't even know we were putting it off.
More, well, it just kind of, I mean, I think since I've been here probably last two or three years, we've talked about it in our offices and stuff, but it just, it needs to be moved up to the top of the priority list.
Yes.
It's not if, you know, when.
Yeah.
That's from the sales.
So like in our regular budget, we would have our sort of annual fees, like we end up contracting with a company to do something monthly that would be like our regular town budget. This is sort of a one-time purchase of all the hardware.
So I would say, I mean, I'm open to using ARPA funds for this, I think there's a reasonable use, but if for some reason you don't want to use ARPA funds for this, then I feel like this, we need to use, we need to get that.
This is in fund balance.
I can do it.
For the, for the, whoever has to come in and work on it, like.
Yeah.
But just, I've got my true good role, and if you need to come to us and, and say, you know, we need, I propose we take the money from. I don't care. So that's something that we need to. We need to back down, patch this a little bit in that regard.
Yeah.
Kathy?
Is this gonna reject the voting machines and all that?
Voting machines are standalone, I don't think that they are vulnerable.
But.
Those are supported, the voting machines are supported by their own security.
And they're not plugged into our networks.
Yeah.
So they're, they're only vulnerable on certain. No, that's not an explanation. And I'll ask you a question about that.
I had a comment, there's someone who worked in this area professionally. Whatever you do to evaluate it, needs to look at the scope of everything that's connected ever to town internet, so everybody's own computers that connect. Everybody who does town email on their personal computers with that stuff, it's a matter of public record, your scope of work for evaluation. And your policies need to include everybody and everything.
Definitely. Oh, yeah, doesn't make any sense to not. But. Yeah, keep that all on, please.
It gets an awful policy.
Okay, so there ended the review of the, uh, ARPA request that we've seen this round. Um, as Sherry pointed out, we did have a list of projects that that we had presented, we did our informational meetings, that were projects that are already on your way, that were potential projects as well.
I feel very strongly that they're off the table. Some of these people have been here twice, while we were just trying to figure out what we were doing with this. They came, then presented their projects, we took a look at it, we said. We took a look at it, we said, whoa, we really need to pull out information from everybody on this. And so they went back and they filled out this, this request form we put together and have come here. And, and I think just in fairness, that they put all this work in and for us to say, oh, yeah, well, by the way, we're gonna pull this and this and this into it also, yes, it was the information we needed, but it was no problem. So I think we should stick to twelve projects that have actually made, have actually filled it.
So if we can't get the swinging bridge back up without some additional funds, it's not gonna.
We've got some resources. Well, I think we also think about, uh, getting that the cost of those projects, we don't necessarily have to level fund the twelve projects that we have here, still, um, potentially since November, so if we have another round of ARPA funds, then the town can apply, like same way that we did with the cybersecurity, to fill out an application with another.
Are there going to be more ARPA funds?
No.
So this is.
Yeah, ready.
Those are these infrastructure programs, could go back to that.
Right, so this is.
I've got my list. I'm all laid out.
Hello, how you doing?
In addition to this, or?
Oh, based on what we've done in this meeting.
Well, yeah, I, I pretty much know where I am on that. And I, I think that's just a moving process for everybody, let's get it done today and be done then. Instead of, oh, well, you know, we do two hundred and fifty thousand dollars today and we have another million dollars to decide later, just, just do it. Well, if you're a Nike person, you understand, just do it.
Can I just quickly, briefly, just, uh.
Oh, I told her. Wiz whispered to me, that was my question.
Can you, what were you gonna say?
Um. No, I guess if that's the, I think she was probably, I think it's sensitive, Wiz is trying to focus on the twelve right now, and if you have things left over, then certain projects do not, so, right.
I've got fifty-six thousand dollars left over.
Perfect.
Right, or if it's not.
We could, we could hire somebody to plan, uh, new town roads.
There you go. So I have zero mon, zero dollars left over.
But I do, but I do think that there's, I mean, this is not the time of this conversation, but we talked a little bit about it in the very beginning, I think for some, it's a little bit different for the projects that are going through the town, right, the, for the commission, the commission is a committee of the town, so it's technically, we're holding those funds until we have to pay for them. But I do think we'd have a conversation about how we're writing and checking out the organizations that are not part of the town, so whether that's like, those who, like the conservation commission.
Oh, as an example.
As an example, would provide, case of the receipt or with an estimate, and not even pay that. But I think we should have a conversation about how the funds are going to organizations that are not town.
Right, because once, well, but once we do that, it's sort of out of our control, it's sort of like a trust thing, you assume that they're gonna spend it the way that they're supposed to, because as we talked about, once we write the check, that's spent on our end.
How obvious is it to do it on basis of your personal, which is what all grants are.
Yeah, this grants are a reimbursement.
You send the money and it will be reimbursed.
Yeah, I mean, that's certainly something, I think we could.
In defense of.
Not in all situations, but somehow I would be able to be reimbursed.
So Kathy's question.
Doesn't ARPA, doesn't the the stuff you got from the federal government, the sound of the goal and blah, 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 telling you how it needs to be dispersed and accounted for?
Right, and that's what I said, once we give it to an organization, it's spent on our end, because we took the standard allocation, meaning that it was going to be for government services, which is very broad.
They will split it up.
So, so if you, if you were a town that got less than ten million dollars, you could take standard allowance.
There's the performance writing for the.
When we do our annual reporting, we will still have to, um, create some narrative, you know, we gave access to whatever this benefits, but you know, there, there is still some reporting, but it's not a matter of providing receipts to show how primary community care center spent the money we gave, you know, it's just a thing.
But, but the town could establish a requirement that the organization file a report and provide a picture of the work that.
We can all, yeah.
It could easily.
I mean, that seems only responsive.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, all right, I will defer to folks who are here about, because I missed the meetings where this process was set up, so this is the process and.
We haven't gotten, we've really. We've basically gotten here.
Yeah. This is, this is.
So, because I, I didn't understand, I guess that this was all, like. Anyway, it's fine, it's okay. There are a lot of other things, I mean, we could spend the entire eight hundred and fifty-five thousand on, I can think of, I can think of four projects that have not completely funded, even though they already have ones.
Well, I thought one of the goals was that we were hoping to actually, you know, try to have fun with things that would actually contribute, but to get it to that last.
Oh, it's milk.
You know, so that we actually complete, see some things get completed, rather than just giving, you know, spreading it out so thinly that everybody still has to chase and leverage more.
Yeah.
My, my, I was just, I was to fund as much as possible of what people asked for, or have someone actually, you know, rather than saying, oh, you want ten thousand dollars, well, who'll give you five, you do what I get. I also, on my topic, will say that, I talked to Julie Lewis Smith yesterday, and she seemed very, very confident that they are going to get all the money they need, they're gonna have to borrow money on a bridge loan until it comes through, but they haven't. And so I would like to suggest that we just take out that three hundred thousand dollars. And that means that, I mean, that makes the conversation that much easier, because without that three hundred dollars, three hundred thousand dollars, you've got a request for four hundred and something, or three hundred and fifty, five thousand dollars.
I guess that's my thoughts, so yeah. That's great. It sounds to me, it's also, I think Jamie has a comment, so library, I think the towns already, they made a lot of funds tonight, so I'm interested to know about that. So I guess the, I don't know, I would really like to discuss that in any particular, I mean, how much that seems like, that you've got some choices there, um, so I'm just very surprised, personally, about that, but, um, since the library, that, that would certainly be easier.
Maybe one easier, and Chris, when you put the summaries together, do you want them all that are patented?
Yes, they're in order of the score.
In order of the score?
Yeah, so it's done, I've been.
In order to that, um, I think we should first have, so I can say. Well, a lot of questions about the downtown commission and what specifically that money's going for, so, um, but since that downtown commission is still part of the town, there's work done, you can use online pockets, that will be done.
Yeah, the downtown, when we achieve downtown designation, which is what the downtown commission is, uh, working, working to do. There will, I don't envision there being a downtown commission and a downtown organization. I assume and hope that people that are involved in the downtown commission right now will potentially be part of the board of that organization, and the downtown commission will not need to exist. Because we will have a downtown organization that's doing all of the things around what that, you know, what the mission of that is.
Okay, so you're right, I mean, right now, we decided to provide funds to the commission, it would be held by the town for like until that, um, was created or until there were things that need to be expended until that, that basically what.
Uh, yeah.
Because it's not as a organization right now, so it's a commission, okay.
The, the planning grant, municipal planner that's doing this work now, is going to develop a strategy to.
Quite a good strategy.
To fund the downtown.
Okay.
So essentially, we are paying somebody right now to develop a funding strategy for that.
And that person would like to, that's the municipal planning grant, so that planning could include any of the, any of the ARPA funds that we chose to give to the downtown commission, that could be part of her strategic plan.
And do you know what we're paying her right now?
We're paying her the municipal planning grant amount, twenty-two thousand dollars.
Okay, okay.
And she works in the town until December, and then we apply for downtown designation and hopefully get it.
Okay. I'm, it's, okay. So just my, I think on my comments with that one, I think that when that project's ready, I would think we're gonna provide the funds to that, uh, whether that's, like, but the fifty thousand, I I think also from the comments, they emailed to the comments in the application, I think maybe something more like, can be a good start for ARPA funds, and then if that also helps to fund other infrastructure projects. It seems pretty big right now as to what is going on, and a lot of questions about the, the grants and, and, anyway, it was, I think it's a totally worthy product, but no girls right now.
I think it's a, uh, it would be difficult to make a decision about that today. Certainly, um, we're looking at having a association on from Heather, Harry, to the consultant in our August select board meeting, most likely after that, it might be more clear what the, what the possibilities are.
And the needs are.
Yeah.
Yeah. So.
I think it's hard to, I, I'm having a little bit of a meltdown thinking about making a decision on all of these in the next half an hour.
That's what I'm just.
And I, I don't really have all after this, I just, I'm just saying.
So I, I'd say that one way we could proceed, is we could start, I think, uh, OB has a list, I think Wiz has a list. And we could start with, kind of like we do with our town budget, we could throw up a, a, we could read it up, in case you could put it up.
We need a drum ball.
We have, we see this, we have this, we have this.
This is, you know, the first, this is the highest standard.
Seems like, the issue is how much.
Yes, this meeting, I think. All three hundred and something.
No, not all three hundred, but what did they ask you for?
One thirty-nine.
One thirty-nine, I mean, how are we gonna choose between wiring the east side or wiring the townhouse and wiring the west?
Just West Hill, yeah, except Paul didn't point out that this would be counted towards your total for the start.
Right, this does count towards East Hardwick.
If you're total.
Yeah.
Cause there's Pumpkin Lane.
Hundred and sixteen. I've got, I've got the, I'm just gonna say, um, I've got broadband at one thirty-nine.
So does Wiz.
Yeah, yeah. The, the.
And her, I didn't talk.
Right.
Her and I didn't talk.
So that would be, yeah. This is, okay, this is.
So one thirty-nine, even or one thirty-nine, nine ninety-nine, that.
Paul's according to ninety-nine bucks.
So what are, what was for one thirty-nine?
I almost rounded it up, whether you wanted to talk to.
Okay.
So you want a motion on that?
No, I want, I want to sort through the whole thing, because I'm not gonna sleep, because it's totally, like, how are you gonna know?
Okay, so that would be, uh, the post was potentially the one thirty-nine, that was a question.
So second on our list, that we use the townhouse.
Oh, that wasn't first, okay, sorry, that was second.
There was no, in their rankings.
The rankings and all, yeah, we will get that evaluation.
Yeah.
The term this patient came in separate.
So, two, three, there.
And that.
And that they're asking for fifty thousand dollars.
I think, I think.
Asking for twenty-four, fifty.
Everybody liked that, according to comments, everybody liked the townhouse as a project. I particularly like the idea of getting those, getting those, uh, tires taken off of there, because you can just see it robbing the building.
Yeah.
And that's, I find out, a little bit painful to look at. But the other, and, I don't know, so what do you have?
Fifty thousand.
Oh, hi, hey, guys.
We're totally tired.
Yeah.
No, we weren't.
Okay, so we're just looking, looking down.
Third, the town with the range number.
You too.
I did fifty for the. Oh, I did fifty. Okay, well, I got ten. I mean, so I'll give you a prime example, last night, I was at a fire district meeting, they have their annual meeting scheduled for next month. They have no, they have a place in the back of the church, which holds maybe comfortably fifteen to twenty people, maybe fifteen. Like comfortably.
Inside.
Inside, and the Grange, there is a meeting place, and they can't hold the, the, the annual meeting at the Grange because it's not accessible.
Yeah, I hear you.
Yeah. The only question I have, maybe for the Grange folks, is, are there any available programs from like the National Grange to?
Is there still a National Grange?
There's a website.
There's a State Grange too.
The, the, the kinds of grants that are available are the thousand dollar, in fact.
We got that one.
We got that.
Okay, okay, so, so it's really on.
So we committed, I have another ask, if we committed forty thousand to the Grange, can you guys buy some box stands for the windows for the summer?
Did you enjoy a show at the Grange?
I may have, I may have, I may have been, there may be photo documentary evidence, but I don't exactly.
And, and really, that's a, like, that is, that means so much, that just that.
A cultural.
It's a very important skill.
It's historical, uh.
It's folkloric, yeah.
So it's the only real meeting space in our town.
Well.
I have it at fifty, but we can, I thought it was fifty, though.
They're already answered for forty.
Wiz has it at forty.
Sorry, so that's another ten thousand for the town plan for the drop.
Yeah, that's perfect, just bump that up.
So what was the next one?
On cybersecurity, and I think the town has other funds, they, they, they think it absolutely needs to be done, so if there's money, that there's money, some ourselves.
Okay.
So.
Break that.
Hang on, hang on, hang on, that's just one year. You, you think so?
Well, it has to come from the fund balance.
Yeah, and the fund balance is still that, and just in, to use a bit of like.
Yeah, so it, uh, uh, we'll have to do something more better, like what quarter we need to address that, and it's gonna be like kind of an unbridgeable item, so, yeah, okay.
But in any case, we just need to do that, so, so Wiz doesn't want to take it here, I'm not like, so wait, where is that?
So now we're up to food century.
You run so fast.
No, we all have a lot.
I know, I know, carry on.
Um, I actually have a question, I like this, because this is purely operating. And, and, you know, this goes away, what are they gonna keep up, are they gonna, this is one, I'm not speaking in full sentences, this is one-time money to the town, and I would prefer to spend it on one-time projects as opposed to.
Some more of an investment, I'm sure.
Yeah. Terrible, so, if everybody gives us something, I would say the minimum of twelve-month period, but I don't think it's gonna, you know, it's gonna operate, that's, it's, it's, it's just.
We also have the opportunity to do a larger appropriation in the past, at the town meeting, you know, and then the voters get to decide, you know.
And next year, we should have a real town meeting, so people can actually discuss the society.
Only, only to show that ARPA funds did come, focused on, spoke to supporting COVID-related programs and those in country, and it did an incredible job. So I would say that we would rather than the twelve thousand dollars for supporting, not just supporting, but all the in Braxford, um, and they also additional dates they added, there was a huge amount they did during COVID, so I may tweak that.
Can we round it off, twenty, fifteen?
There, there are a few.
Well, yeah, sure. Well, yeah, sure.
There is one.
Where are we then? Cause you're driving.
Um, so next is Heartbeat Conservation Commission? Absolutely, I think that's, that's, that's baseline information that is never gonna be vulnerable, and yes.
Oh, it has the one of the fifteen.
I would go with the twenty.
So somebody need to note that the, that the allocation is five already.
Yes.
Somebody
I have five.
Well, they said that, but if I, I'm majoring in, in the regular line items, I increased their line item this year, it's like, because it was five numbers and we're just giving that
But more towards, I don't know. That night, I don't think she would have a number that night, so I don't, I don't remember actually.
No, she didn't have a number.
They had a, um, estimate between twelve and fifteen thousand.
On their application?
On their, no, that night, Rachel.
If you, you remember, are you?
I'm gonna hold up right now.
All right.
Well, I think it's fifty, and then if they have, once they get a hard number, then we can reunite.
Yeah, it's ten, fifteen.
Well, there also was some aspect of it that was, if they, if the the inventory would have to sort of conform to their budget to some degree. Cause they were optional items to do, I think they were like, I did go to the presentation, but it was a while ago, they made that like optional format or less nothing.
They do their applications, so they did have a little money in hand, like, two thousand or something.
Two thousand or four, to go.
So, okay, so just to throw a number in there, but throw
Fifteen, fifteen thousand. The next one was Civic Standard, um, they asked for eighteen months, I'm speaking a year. This is a startup, and we're on the, we actually operate across, but this is startup, uh, given years, so I divided what they asked for by multiplied by whatever, and came up to thirty-five thousand dollars.
So you didn't like funding, uh, operating expenses?
Sorry, this is a start.
You know, that's, it's a start. Also, a nonprofit organization that's focusing on something that we had as one of our three things in our community visit that we haven't really fully addressed, and that's activities for youth and ways for, uh, intergenerational, uh, program, I
Can I refer that we come back to this one, let's we know how much we've funded it so far, is that okay? So
Well, I'm all right with Wiz throwing a number in there.
Okay.
Maybe we have a number to
I did.
Thirty-five.
I had twenty-five.
We should work together.
What are we putting in there right now?
Thirty-five.
The East Perfect Organization?
Thirty.
We're putting in thirty in this first.
Okay.
So, the East Perfect Organization didn't ask for any money, and so I'm, I'm wanted, you know?
I think we didn't address their needs. Yeah.
I think that, yeah, I think that those things are, those things that you need, it's on there.
I remember that, that's on me, and for me, yeah, yeah.
Do you think it's pretty important that, um, the East Perfect Road radar items, I've been talking to it for a really long time. So I think if we're going to do that, we really have to commit to maybe doing some of this year, if we can talk to town budgets and stuff this year. And or if the radar starts to size to come out of the PD budget, I think, I'm sure not gonna provide anything specifically for the Star Village or the Grange, and we need to really show that.
And anything about it.
And, well, that's a bit funny, but
So of course, the radar signs are a definite, we can do that very easily, um, and there's plans to do that, and then guard routes, I think, we can get those done before winter.
I think once we get that walk on it in our next meeting, we can have it as part of our agenda to determine what those things are that we can potentially take on.
I also, I also, I think, maybe I don't know, but I I tend to read just with the, with the, um, statement that that East Heartwick roads are are worse than any of the rest of the roads, but
Have you seen the hedge basin out here on Church Street?
Yeah.
Have you, have you?
Or that they don't get, I mean, I mean, Mondomary Road and Artie Arms Road got a lot of attention.
The curb roads get a lot of attention, that was not, and it's not free page, I think it's just important that sidewalks are real safety, so
But I think that that's true everywhere.
Yeah.
I mean, if you're going down the
There are no sidewalks in Heartwick that will say that on your
There are also no sidewalks to the trailer park here, yes, there are lots of places we don't have sidewalks.
Maybe Eric, it's more of a matter of communicating what we talk to town already, or if it's, it's just a feeling of not having as, I mean, senior students just say that, which is great, but maybe we just communicate to, you know, what they're, what they're doing, that we're doing something that's not going to
I don't understand why East Heartwick is not part of the teleport.
It is Heartwick.
So then shouldn't it just be part of like our general road plan?
Right, that's why I said this, and not me and the road foreman, to, to make sure that we are doing things in East Heartwick, okay.
It just, I will say that there were sidewalks in the Heartwick, there were wonderful photographs of those, which were beautiful sidewalks.
And there were sidewalks on North Main Street too, right, and there are, but
We've got one more, go.
When I say they're not, I'm just doing a terrible thing there.
Okay, yeah, sorry, sorry.
Twenty-five hundred dollars.
For four seats?
For the four seats, so, I think that's, that's that's a lack of
You wanna write it up? Yeah, let's tell her around to five, five.
Sure, I do, I do think it's important, though, to just, as somebody who's done a lot of groundwork, that we should stick to our request and not to, to start grabbing the work down. Like, if my application's gonna ask for it, I think that is not, so, I think we should stick to our request.
All right, Eric, that's, that's fair, all right, uh, so I'm at a total, a total sum of two ninety-two.
But we got part of spend?
Wiz, Wiz says we can't spend, um, things that are large, but
This is one of five, I'm still
I'm concerned about the infrastructure.
You got Rose?
Do you mind if I speak?
You are, you missed your handbag.
Okay, um, I really appreciate the openness, especially to get to see how this process works, um. I, I do wanna say just, we are a startup, but I've been doing this for a really long time, and I've been mostly doing it unpaid. And I do think that the town should consider this as an ongoing possible role or something to allocate some money towards. Um, because social programming is a necessity for quality of life, I know we have a ref committee, um, but it's somewhat limited what they do um, and where, you know, who they touch, um, in the community, and, you know, obviously, we feel like being a resident in that building is gonna do a lot for Main Street and a lot for downtown, but that's really only one part of it. The programming that I've been doing for years and years is really what this is gonna continue to just be a, an umbrella for. So I, I'm not, you know, trying to argue any of this conversation, I'm just saying, like, bigger, longer term thinking. I, I would love for that to be something that ever gets put into a conversation, um, it is just like the ongoing process of that, like, how do we hold that as a community, because as Cher pointed out, it was in the town plan and in a lot of those conversations.
You know, ultimately, I'm just gonna say, it may not go over well, but giving the downtown commission that I'm not aware of is potentially a way to further support downtown activities, and that's one of, um, and one of our main core objectives, um.
Yeah, I'd like to give one second just to wrap up, I, I don't really, you know, personally, as a member of them, I think all these are great projects. But I do wanna say with broadband, which you've appointed me to represent up here in the house, this is an opportunity to bring two extra dollars from money from Hardwood to an organization that, that through state statute, is not be able to come to the town, Hardwood, to ask for anybody to So these ARPA funds are a one-time chance to bring two extra dollars down. I, I think it's a valuable thing, but as I said, it's gonna help them eventually, so I, it's the hardest, I'm not sure how I would vote if I were to choose to buy another place, to be, really honest.
Interesting perspective.
Yeah, you were good, you were good for a minute there, you showed yourself in the book.
No.
You want to be your representative?
I know, I
Well, it's a good
There's a lot of good benefits, it would be
It's a one-time match, and it's a one-time, it's a money.
Yeah, I, I think the other point is that, um, if we don't put any money in there, it still happens.
Yeah, but it takes a lot longer.
But hopefully it still lasts a couple of years, yeah.
Well, I might, my kids might make college before I get high speed, so that may actually I'm pretty good with kids' game, uh
Yeah, cool.
I'm kidding. Not really with kids. Not until they're
You're good at having them.
Not until they're
So, Paul, I'm sorry, I wanted to look at the property, or thirty, almost thirty-nine, there's a middle
There's a middle here, so the first tier does heartbeat and Route sixteen, Route fifteen. Almost drops it down and then pumpkin light.
Okay.
The next tier does Bridgeville, and the last hill, the tier does West Hill.
And what's the, um, what is the cost of adding for it?
The sign on the door of the town plan, it says three o'clock.
It says about a hundred and five thousand, and then the last thirty-five is West Hill.
Oh, that's a good one, that's a good break.
So, can you, Chris, do you have reading out the amounts and what, just to recap, we have this question, that's exactly what I wanted.
My sense is we, we are proposing, do we want to vote on the file proposal?
Just to make you the first
Uh, four seats gets twenty-five hundred, Civic Standard gets thirty-five thousand, the Conservation Survey gets fifteen thousand, Downtown Commission gets ten thousand. Uh, Food Pantry gets fifteen thousand, right, that was rounded up, um. Do you want to raise your objection about rounding up when the Food Pantry asks for twelve?
Well, they have a range, they have a range.
They have a range.
Okay, um, Grange wants forty, Grange gets forty, broadband one thirty-nine five. Um, cybersecurity, the town will pay for it, and the town has fifty thousand. House with a total of three hundred and seven thousand dollars.
But we, um, I, I think we should fund equally the downtown commission and the center.
They're not the same thing.
But I think whether that's lower for each, but they're working towards the same kind of downtown, no?
No.
One's, one's for economic development, one's for, uh
The party's cultural.
Cultural programs.
I would say that the Civic Standard will focus to the library and the downtown commission, but and, yeah.
Are these in the seats?
I don't know. These are proposal.
Uh, and then the remaining amount is three fifty-five, is that right? Is three oh seven, what's seven, I understand that, the remaining amount of ARPA funding after the water project?
Three fifty-five.
Three fifty-five, so that would leave us with
Forty? But in this scenario, she's saying forty-eight.
Forty, forty, they, to potentially put towards some other thing.
Town, I would rather.
Right.
The bridge, or the yellow bridge.
Or bridge.
Or yellow.
It's a yellow.
And let's say we're running water doors.
I mean, and
I
That's a good
I move that we vote these amounts, just read, I don't know if they are funds to the, the projects of
Second. I'm doing the number.
She's doing it as asleep.
I'm doing it asleep.
A second, comments, discussion. You wanna go to, you wanna add comments and amend the motion, please, here?
No, I just, I, um
You wanna table it till the twenty-first of that board meeting?
I do think, I do think Danny would appreciate listening to that, and, you know, I mean, we have, the north here, which I just, but they, um especially when I consider, I have someone I can get two, two positions that we've not funded to their request, maybe if we, can we approve all the ones that we funded through requests and then review those two? Maybe we add more to those in the prayers, is that?
Um, but we don't want to have to spend it in a twenty-three six, so
Right, that's one way
Out there, you know, maybe that will decide that we, you know, we apply for a, a grant for the memorial building roof which is on that old list that was, that Wes doesn't wanna, but still, we, we'll need a match for that grant, we'll need a match, and it's slavery, so
It costs money, it's under yours.
Right, so, um, yeah, I think, I think since we trusted what we
So you're, are you kinda saying it wouldn't hurt to leave some money in there, cause we have other projects?
Yeah, leave money in there, let's just do this, and, you know, not be like forty-eight hundred, yeah.
All right, all in favor of her making this, uh, slate of ways to spend ARPA funds, uh, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's everyone, so motion carries, thank you everyone.
You're a lot of hard work.
Could be worse. Sometimes it is, um, we actually, speaking of worse, we have sorry.
Yeah, you guys can't leave just because you got your money.
Congratulations again.
Yeah.
Um, so
It's an easy way for people to, congratulations, it's a fun thing.
Thanks for coming.
You see, Paul, it was worth your time.
All right, next is what board reports?
Chamber Players first project, it's Thursday.
Um, your name will be fixed, but
People need to, you know, if they're interested in the Chamber Players contract, they need to contact Chamber Players, the town has been on due to the sales, something like that. I'm gonna be out of town anyway, so don't be following that number.
Oh, sure, we'll get there.
Uh, next Tuesday, there's a, um, a community fundraiser for trails for mountain bikers and runners, and, uh, registration starts at five in the eastern parking lot, bikers go off at five thirty-five, runners go off at six. Uh, come out and enjoy the trails, it's that sort of thing, um. Uh, another report is Yellow Bar is, uh, being rejiggered, is nearly rejiggered, working with, uh trying to get the targets so shrunk down to budget. The, we gotta, if, we're still working with our color hunters to make sure they're still in, for the stated amount, even though we've um, adjusted the, uh, physical, right, the physical structures, we still have the same tenants and roughly the same program. Uh, the one thing that's gonna be a challenge, assuming all the hunters are in, or the one thing that's gonna be an immediate challenge is that it will need money upfront to do, uh, the, the, pay our, um, architectural and engineering fund to redesign, get the bid package out again, so we can redo it, so Um, architectural and engineering fund to redesign, get the bid package out again, so we can redo it, so, um. Just in round numbers, that's probably gonna cost a total of about a hundred, hundred thousand, which we're gonna need about fifty thousand. Speed. Anyway, so looking for that, um.
Forty-eight thousand?
I was gonna, I was gonna give a pitch for twenty-five, that's, um, but we got that, that's another time, anyway, that's just sort of the update. Same as the reports, or told business, or new business. So, uh, here's.
I'd like to congratulate us on a civilized process that was conducted with almost, um, raising the voices.
Almost.
Almost.
Who raised their voice?
We never go to the street, but I did not.
That's true.
We've never done this before, we, we, we made this up as we went along, and I think it's. So.
Yay, boss.
Raising your voice is not a sign of, like. You know.
It's.
Yeah, it's, yeah, I mean, see, it was the House of Commons and, I mean, they raised the House a long time, you know, I, I think this was great.
Yeah.
There's, I wish we had more, I wish we could, me every month, but don't.
Yeah, I'll look out.
But, yeah.
Um, so, what about a motion to enter executive session for one BSA, twenty thirteen, to discuss a voting on that? All in favor, you say aye.
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 We're gonna go down.
Wait, did everybody say aye? Anybody votes? If we're going to.
Thank you so much, guys.
Yeah.
It's even the top of the building.
Isn't it nice?
What are we trying?